You belong here.
I love my hometown and I feel like I belong here and I want everyone to feel that way.
All of the work that we do is all encapsulated under our strategic plan that we have. We have six values in that strategic plan.
We are bold.
Corona has the latest equipment, always optimizing for our citizens.
We are humble.
Corona, serving our city with pride.
We are driven.
Come on and join us, guys.
We are honest.
I am planting some trees and I'm 100% having fun.
We are kind.
You're happy today, huh?
I'm so happy for you.
We are a team.
Hey, we love it. Thanks for coming, everybody.
All right, all you rebels. The last one to sit down has to lead the pledge of allegiance. It looks like it might be Jackie. Oh. Okay, if we could have our brand new, permanent, full-time, community services director, Donna Finch, lead us in the pledge of allegiance, that would be great. Good job, Donna. See what it says. "To sing the Star Spangled Banner tonight as Assistant City Manager Justin Tucker." We might forego that. "At this time on a convened open session, individuals wishing to address the city are requested to complete a speaker card and deliver it to the city clerk on my left. Try to keep your comments to three minutes. Try to be a resident of the city. If you're not, I suppose that's okay. But we prefer you are." We're gonna go into public... Oh, open session, proclamations. Is Latitude 36 Foods here? You guys wanna come up? How about a little clap for the Latitude?
Because this is a great District 5 business that I got a wonderful tour of and so happy to see y'all again. Great, got some yummy salad, got to see an amazing place. Great to see you guys.
Oh, we have a video for everyone.
The city of Corona recently toured Latitude 36 Foods. They're a Corona food manufacturer that took the Live Work Corona pledge, which shows their commitment to hiring local.
Here in Corona, we do have about 80% of our workforce that works and lives here in Corona, and so that's very, very exciting for us. They get to, you know, work here and then go right back home, you know, just a couple exits away from the freeway, and so that's very, very exciting for them.
They don't have to worry about commuting to longer distances, which in California can be quite an odyssey. It also helps keep retention, so it was important to our leadership team to keep the business here. And again, it just demonstrates our commitment to continue to grow the business right here in the city of Corona.
Throughout the transition from one location to another, we had a very successful partnership with the city of Corona themselves and in a lot of support when it came to, you know, moving to a whole new home, and so that was really exciting for us, and we truly appreciated the support from a structural standpoint.
We appreciate everything the city's done for us as well, and you guys have made yourself very available to us. Again, we actually engaged with the city on a few occasions to really help us navigate, because there's always some new regulation that comes up, and definitely having someone that's well-versed in those rules and regulations has really helped us smooth the process out a bit for us.
So by taking the pledge, we actually got a lot of other resources, right, that came in with that partnership. They help us with remarketing, right? They really feature us when it comes to, you know, their website, because it really does open up ourselves to different talent, you know, people that maybe haven't heard of Latitude 36 Foods and they're able to show them what we do here locally.
So I would take the pledge and I would encourage every other company to do so, because again, there's a lot of resources available with the city, and the city is a great resource and has been a great resource for Latitude 36 Foods.
So take the pledge today or contact us to learn more.
About a little clap for Latitude? Well, I'm sorry you guys are stuck in District 5, but you have a okay council member, I suppose. But we have a recognition for you guys, and then we got a bunch of merch. Steiner says I have to read these things from now on, so... It's a bunch of whereas, whereas, you guys are great, you're taking the pledge, 80% of your workforce currently live in Corona, is that right? You are an HR manager. Okay, and so, honestly, I'm not gonna read this thing, but you guys can hold this. And then, we got a plaque for you, trophy. Made it last night in the garage. Oh yeah, we stole this out of Wes's office. And then if you could give us some words?
Well, I am pleased and honored to be here today and accept this on behalf of Latitude 36 Foods. We greatly appreciate and value the partnership that we've built with the city of Corona, and we're proud to be part of the Live Work Corona initiative. We also like to... I'd also like to acknowledge the leadership team for having the vision to grow the business right here in Corona. So again, from Latitude 36 Foods, we want to say thank you to the city of Corona, and we look forward to future collaborations.
And the city of Corona is glad you're here. We're gonna take a picture. Very good company. They and me like to recommend healthy eating, so can't go wrong there. Up next is the Corona Parks Foundation. That's probably Connie around here somewhere. Oh, there's conditions with this award. Well, you guys don't get any merch, but get all sorts of proclamations. Yeah, can the donors please come up too? Okay, so we have some proclamations for the donors, and I'm told I have to read this verbatim. This is, "The past year, the Corona Fire Safety Foundation, the Corona Parks Foundation, Flower Company, Main Street Brewery, Gray Wolf Brewery Company, Evans Brewing Company and Skyland Ale Works has helped establish a new life-saving AED held in..." I got this. "They established an AED station held in Border Park," there's some typos here, "to provide medical assistance in the event of an emergency. The station provides easy..." Some certificates, so... Oh boy. Corona Fire Safety Foundation, Connie. Evans Brewing Company? All right, they don't get one then. Corona Parks Foundation again? Sorry, Mike. Oh, yeah. Skyland? Thank you for wearing the sweatshirts. Gray Wolf, are you guys here? All right, Dead Beats. Main Street Brewery? All right, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
And I know you guys, Flower Co. Okay, you wanna give us a few words, Michelle?
Thank you. I just want to say in partnership, the Corona Parks Foundation and the Corona Fire Safety Foundation worked together to bring the first AED safety station with the fire department, and our wonderful donors here have so generously donated and supported us to make this possible. The first public AED in a park for Corona. We're hoping that we can bring more to our parks. This was kind of a pilot program. Without your generous donations and your support through the concert series, these great breweries always bring us beer in our concert series, and we are happy to say that the Corona Parks Foundation takes 100% of the sales without overhead. It goes straight back to the foundation, goes straight out to Parks Projects, and this was one of them. So, and we needed the extra support from Flower Co. to make it even possible. This is an expensive addition to our parks, and so we had the loss of a life unfortunately a couple of years ago at Border Park at the pickleball courts, and the players there have been trained on how to do CPR. They've had a demonstration on how to use the AED and what to do should something happen again. So this is just a fantastic opportunity for our community, and it's all possible because of you, so thank you.
Thanks, Michelle, you're always well-spoken. This is a Steiner dream come true. Fire, beer, and cannabis. Really, he should... How he's not down here is a mystery to me. Honestly though, guys, thank you, thank you, thank you. Your involvement in the community is valuable, but Michelle said it better, and if we could All right, Gray Wolf Company and Evans have to sing the pledge of allegiance next All right, is Aaron Haake here? All right, Aaron, you wanna speak from there, or do you wanna speak here, or do you want the mayor's seat? No? Okay, why don't you come up and I'll wander my way up there? All right, so let me introduce you.
Sounds good.
So if you don't know Aaron Haake, he... I'm okay introducing you, right?
You're the mayor.
All right. I have a hammer. The... Aaron Haake is soon to be in charge of RCTC. He's a good man. He used to live in Corona, but now he lives in Norco, unfortunately, and he's gonna give us an update on RCTC, so good luck, Aaron.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, mayor and council, honorable counsel, residents of Corona. It's good to be home, and it's good to be among people that I respect, know, and love, and in a community I'm very proud of. I'm here tonight to talk about the traffic relief plan, draft traffic relief plan, on behalf of the Riverside County Transportation Commission, of which City of Corona is a member, and it's an important discussion for many residents of the city. I'm sure most residents of the city, including myself, who, growing up here, remember when there was a dairy farm across the street, there were orange groves. There weren't as many people here, but yet, at that time still, our dinnertime conversations were centered around what time was dad coming home based on how bad was the 91? And that's an experience I think a lot of residents who have been here a while have had, and in many ways, things have not changed. It's still a predominant issue in our community, and it's one that I'm committed to address as the next executive director of Riverside County Transportation Commission in collaboration with all of you. So in that spirit, I want to begin tonight talking about the draft traffic relief plan, but also about who RCTC is and what we are doing in collaboration with the city of Corona, your neighbors, and all of our partners. This is an agency that has been around for quite a while, but it was created when the state of California decided it was going to step back from investing in our transportation system, and leaders in this region and throughout Southern California said, "We need to step up at the local level and do something to fill in this gap, because we know that the transportation system needs to evolve as our region evolves with it, as we grow." And so RCTC was formed. It's gone on through several changes over the years, but today, you and each of your neighboring cities throughout Riverside County each have a seat on that board. Your commissioner is Wes Speek, as you have appointed him. You're also represented by the Board of Supervisors, and so it's a collaborative body that works to achieve regional consensus on matters ranging from public transit to active transportation to highway improvements and recently, express lanes. We operate the 91 and the 15 express lanes. We delivered the projects that made those possible, as well as the recent 1591 express lane connector to the north that just completed. We are also a member of the Joint Powers Authority that administers MetroLink, the train system that runs through here. We own the rail stations in Corona, West Corona and North Maine. In fact, North Maine-Corona-Metrolink station came to be out of a city redevelopment project. We worked together with you to get that land next to the railroad tracks and make that station happen. We fund public transit, not only Riverside Transit Agency, but your Corona Cruiser. The federal and state funds that come to your transit agency come through us, and we make sure that we're with you every step of the way to make sure that those services happen for your residents. I've spoken to all of those things, so I'll keep moving. Some specific examples of work that we've done recently include the 15 Express Lanes Project, the 15 interim corridor operations project, which was that additional lane on the shoulder of the freeway that Caltrans permitted us to do in record time between Cahalko and Wyrick southbound to try to address the backlog that we knew would happen when we opened that 15 express lanes project and moved the funnel further south. So we got it done. The 91 project, I don't need to tell you about that, we have all lived through that, but as well as the 91 corridor operations project, which is a project that the community here advocated for, and we put out to bid and got constructed in less than two years using the revenue generated from that new 91 express lanes. We've also assisted the city with developing transformative interchange projects at the 91 in Lincoln, Maine, Maple, Green River should be on here as well. In addition to improving those interchanges, yep, Green River Interchange has been reconstructed three or four times just in my 18 years at RCTC, and RCTC has put funding in all of those improvements, and I think there are probably still more on the way. But in addition to just building the interchanges and the bridges over the freeway, RCTC, we widen Main Street, we widen Maple, we widen Lincoln as it goes over the 91 to improve traffic flow through the city and to improve circulation patterns. These are projects that were packaged with the 91 improvement project, and as someone who's lived here quite a long time, I can say has made a considerable improvement. We've assisted the Riverside Transit Agency in building the North Maine Corona Transit Center that's next to the MetroLink station. We've invested in the parking structure at North Maine so that there's capacity there. That parking lot used to be full. Local street and road funding from Mezuray has gone into pavement projects all over the city, and a little over 10 years ago, maybe it was 12 years ago, RCTC took an unprecedented step of putting Mezuray regional arterial funds on the Foothill Parkway outside of a call for projects that normally cities would have to compete for. The city needed to move that project forward, bids were opened. The project needed $21 million more funding than we had already put on it, and the commission stepped forward to put Corona at the front of the line to get Foothill done, and we do that whenever the city calls. So in short, this is a high-level summary of the investments that RCTC has made over the last 10 to 12 years in various different categories. It's not just about freeways, it's about public transit, it's about your local system as well, and RCTC has contributed a lion's share to many of these regional improvements that come through and impact the city. But we are not done, and we all know that. So since Mezuray was last renewed by voters in Riverside County in 2002, it's now 22 years ago, population in Riverside County has increased by 67%. And Mezuray was put on the ballot at that time because the leaders of this region saw that we would be growing and that we would have transportation challenges, the state and the federal government were not gonna come save us, and we needed to do something, and that's why we're able to do what we have been able to do so far. Yet, it is projected, whether we do anything or not, whether we act on the transportation system or not, by 2050, Riverside County will add two more cities the size of Moreno And we will have to deal with that. And so that is, should come as no surprise, that we have one of the worst commutes in the country. So, last year, we picked up where we left off prior to the pandemic by asking the residents to reengage with us in what they saw as the transportation needs were across the county. The traffic relief plan we have in front of you today in draft form builds on the 2020 plan that the commission adopted after extensive public outreach. We kicked off the outreach again last year, and we did a public opinion survey and asked what was most important to residents across the county. You can see on the graph here what really resonated the most. You know, there were 20 or 30 things we asked them about. We just put the most popular things on the screen, has a lot to do with getting out of congestion, keeping roads in good condition, taking care of potholes, and supporting public transit for those communities that need assistance. So we compiled all of the needs that we've heard from our jurisdictions, including yours, stakeholders, members of the public who have commented to us, and we've put together the draft traffic relief plan, and that's what's in front of you today. So back in October, the commission approved circulating this draft for public comment. So I want to reiterate, we're in the public comment stage of a draft traffic relief plan that the commission will consider adopting in April. What's in the plan today is not funded. These are all aspirations that we have heard from all of the communities, from Blythe to Corona, to Mecula, to Beaumont, San Jacinto, Hemet, Paris, Moreno Valley, et cetera, and we won't be able to deliver those things unless, of course, there's funding. So, we took the investments in the traffic relief plan, we categorized them, we tried to find sort of easy-to... user-friendly ways to describe the different types of investments in the plan. That's what's on your pie chart there. There's a map in the book of all the locations of the different proposed projects, and we segmented it out by percentage. So here in the city of Corona, or in the vicinity thereof, here are some examples of things that are included in the document. They include constructing auxiliary lanes on I-15 through the city of Corona, both north and southbound. These are projects that Commissioner Speek has advocated for at RCTC, and we have advocated for with Caltrans to do in partnership with us. It includes adding a new lane on the 91 between the 241 and the 71 in the eastbound direction. That's actually a project we've already jump-started, we're working on the environmental phase of that right now, but we don't have the funding to construct it. Adding a new lane on the 91 between the 15 and Pier Street in Riverside, so that's essentially where the 91 express lanes project ended and where it bottlenecks again. Pothole repairs throughout the city. Investing in your traffic management system, you have one of the more sophisticated traffic management systems here in Riverside County. Investing in Cahalko Road, and in particular, the segment here on the west that intersects with the city of Corona, can be pretty hairy sometimes, and it's a regional corridor that the county of Riverside's been working on for a long time, but again, doesn't have funding to be constructed. Public transit investments. Your city is a great partner with us in exploring the possibility of doing a direct transit connection from the express lanes into the Corona Transit Center, creating new opportunities for access for people to get on the express lanes from downtown, essentially. We've been actively working on that project. We're also looking at extending rail service to the Coachella Valley. I've heard that there may be interest here in the city of having that rail system stop here on its way to Indio from Los Angeles, I'm sorry, to Coachella from Los Angeles. Investing in the Santa Ana River Trail, there's a gap through this city. Again, we're collaborating with your staff on how to complete the gap on the Santa Ana River Trail that goes to Orange County into San Bernardino. And then increasing freeway service patrol, those are those white tow trucks that rode the freeways during peak hours to help you out if you got a flat, if you ran out of gas, had an accident, we're there, free service to just clear the road, get traffic moving again, and make it safe for everyone. These are just some examples. Again, these things aren't funded though, so we are considering whether... So we are considering whether or not to fund the plan with a ballot measure. It could be a 1% sales tax. And I want to be clear, there are two things we're talking about here. There is the traffic relief plan, which is the aspirational document, the strategic plan, if you will, for transportation in Riverside County. And then there's the question of whether that plan should be funded. The commission has decided neither of these things. We're here for public comment to get your feedback on what should be in the plan. And in the interest of transparency, we are telling you and the other city councils around the county that the commission is considering that if the plan gets adopted, that we may want to fund it and get these things done. So we've done an economic analysis by Beacon Economics that says that over, their report says that over the course of the 30-year planning horizon, we anticipate the measure would generate $25 billion across Riverside County, supporting 168,000 jobs, approximately $11 billion in workforce income, and $31 billion in economic output. On the screen, you have the, also the three geographic subregions of the county. And it's important to know, this is particularly important in the eastern parts of the county, that the money generated in those subregions stay in that subregion. So it's not that money in Palm Springs that's generated there couldn't be spent out here. I've lost my slides, but that's okay. What's built into a potential measure and built into the traffic relief plan are accountability measures, some of which are required by state law that we have to do, which is no more than 1% of any revenues generated from the measure can go into administrative salaries and benefits. That's the same of Measure A today. So 99% of the funds go directly into projects and services that serve the public. These are funds that can't be diverted to Washington or Sacramento. This is us seizing our own destiny, should we choose to do it. And of course, all the same requirements that apply to cities about audits and reviews of how the funds are spent and how decisions are made have to be done in public and through a public process. As I'm wrapping up here, I want to note that in that public opinion survey, we did ask the voters, do you see a need for more transportation investment? Not just do you see traffic, but do you see a need for more investment in the transportation system? And the number here, 82%, is consistent in every survey we've asked for the last 10 years. So the need is evident to the voters before we've even asked them whether they want to pay for it. But once we asked them, would you support a 1% sales tax? Countywide, the answer in our May 2023 survey was 67% of the voters across the county said yes. And in this subregion in particular, the cities on your screen there, Corona, Norco, Eastvale, Harupa Valley, and the unincorporated areas, 66% of the voters said yes in that survey. So that's why the commission has this plan in front of you. And we, through May 31st, I'm sorry, March 31st, are in the process of soliciting public feedback. So anyone who's watching this at home, on the social media, or here in the room, you can hold your phone up to the screen. That QR code will take you directly to the draft traffic relief plan. You can download it. There's also an easy-to-use public comment form. You can tell us exactly what you think about the plan. To date, I believe we've received over 600 public comments, thoughtful comments about projects people want, things people want to see done. And by and large, they're not saying, don't do this, or don't do something. They're saying, do more, or do this thing that you left out of the plan. And that's what we're here tonight to hear from you and from the residents of Corona. Of course, you all know how to find me if you have comments. But it's important to us that we're outreach into the community. And we have, Italia Garcia, could you stand up for a second, Italia? Italia's our community engagement manager, and she's here tonight because engaging with the community is important, and it is her job to do the grassroots outreach to stakeholders, to residents, to anyone who wants to talk about anything RCTC is doing, whether it's the traffic relief plan or something else. So Italia is a resource as well as myself. That concludes my presentation. I'm looking forward to your dialogue, your questions. I do know you have a presentation by staff later in the agenda. I will be sticking around for that. Should you have questions for me then as well?
All right. Thank you, Aaron. Do any of my colleagues have questions?
I do, but I need to go through this a little bit more. I had a conversation with Mr. Haig yesterday while at RCA. So I still need to kind of digest all of this before I have more questions.
I'll add in a few things, and maybe it'll help jar something. Thank you for presenting this, and I've seen it now a couple iterations. I sit on the committee that helped put some of these things together. There's still some things missing in here that I've advocated for, for a long time. And I'm hoping that we can wedge them in there. But first, I want to say that it was really important to me to make sure that we see the auxiliary lane projects that are on the 15. We've fought both on the state side. I know that RCTC's helped in those, and we're looking to complete the others. The missing pieces on the 91, especially the Pierce Street extension of the 91 being really important and working with you to ensure that the toll road extension to the 74 be complete because that'll eliminate the bottleneck that's at Cahalko. What I want to point out to folks is that, you know, I think, I had a couple people ask me about, well, how does this work? And won't they just use this money? You know, or don't they use the money now for projects in eastern county or in somewhere else? And there is a bylaw, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, it's 78% of 76?
Yeah. So the way the current measure works, and this is what it's proposed in the draft traffic relief plan, is that this geographic subregions have firewalls in them. And so, and it's done by how much revenue is raised in each area comes back to where it's raised. So money raised in the desert doesn't get spent out here and vice versa. And that's about what the split is today, 78% in the western part of the county.
Right. The one thing I think, and I think you hit on a little bit about us being a self-help county, and I've sat up here for probably the last five years and talked about how the state has abandoned us. Not just abandoned, they made it illegal for to build anything that's over a mile. In fact, we saw our own project on the 15 that, working with RCTC, that all we just wanted an extra 250 feet to be able to eliminate the bottleneck under Cahalko Bridge. And frankly, it was illegal. It's set up in the, under CalSta that you can't do an auxiliary lane that's longer than a mile. So we're hopefully working with our state partners to try and correct that. But at the same time, you know, we need to continue to do those things because they're, no one's going to help us. And as you said, another 500,000 people are scheduled to move here. You look at the city of Lake Elsinore, they are getting a new interchange that's getting funded right now. RCTC, you know, ponied up, you know, a lot of the money for it. However, it's adjacent to these areas that look like there are almost 30,000 homes that are going to be built, that have been already entitled and just waiting to be built. So we're going to have a lot of people on this freeway. So it kind of brings me to the last thing I think I've brought up at several times over the course of these meetings, and I think I got some of my colleagues' attention at the January meeting to talk about a rail connection to the south that, you know, as of right now, if you're in the city of Corona and you want to go, you know, have a glass of wine in Mecula, you have to get in your car. There's no other choice. And with the traffic there is on the 15, yeah, the improvements that we've helped kind of hash out will make it better. But in the long term, if they don't have those connections, long term, they aren't going to happen. And we are a self-help county, meaning that if we don't fund it, no one will. So we're kind of stuck. And there isn't too many choices for us. So I'm hoping that, you know, the suggestions that residents give, that, you know, hopefully I can get my colleagues to support, making sure that 15 rail project gets, you know, put into this. And then when this comes back, we'll see it realized. Thank you.
Mr. Haig, thank you so much for being here and for the presentation. I want to commend you for the transparency and for being here in public. I know that transportation in Corona is, it's a hot topic. It's a hot topic. Folks feel it very personally. And so what I'm taking from this and continuing to, again, digest and think through it is that regardless of what the funding mechanism is, we really do just need a plan in the region to think about flow and traffic and transportation. So I'm fully on board for solutions, and I'm looking forward to, you know, being part of solutions. So as a city, looking at ways that we can really improve, you know, the movement. And we live in a great region that's just growing. So it's necessary to have a plan. How we get there, how we pay for it, that can be a separate discussion. So I appreciate you being here and presenting on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Aaron. Wes, didn't you say you were also at one time promoting the Magnolia Overpass with RCTC?
So turn on my microphone. The bridge project, but that's not through RCTC.
Okay. Okay. I wasn't sure if that was, because I know you've talked about that in the past, so.
Yeah, it's one of those.
You didn't bring it up this time, so I didn't know why.
Yeah, long-term.
Okay. Well, I mean, it sounds just like you're just, we just want public opinion tonight, or public comments. We're not asking us to take a position. And I would say whether we take a position in the future or not, we still need to make sure that we have some ideas for Corona down on paper because it could pass even if we don't support it. So with that, you mentioned that one of the things that you can do is expand access to the Santa Ana River Trail.
Yep.
Can you actually provide connections within the Santa Ana River Trail? Or provide funding to help connect points that aren't connected?
Yeah, that's what we envisioned. So in addition to completing the gap that exists today between essentially Green River and Hidden Valley.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, no, that's what we're trying to do. And actually, County Parks, who was lead on that project many years ago, came to RCTC to deliver the gap.
Okay.
To get it done because Army Corps of Engineers is, as you know, is pretty difficult to deal with, and we need to get that project permitted. And so we're the lead on making sure that that happens.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you were just talking about access to the trailhead, but actually on the trail.
We want to finish the project.
Okay, that's important. All right. And then we had a discussion earlier about our downtown revitalization. Is there, and I wouldn't know where to even begin with this, but ideas on how to bring access to our downtown area via ingress and egress options?
Absolutely. So I watched your study session with great interest this afternoon, and I did note that that part of the plan includes infrastructure improvements, including improvements to Sixth Street or, you know, changes to how traffic flow there. I think that's all in bounds for this discussion on the traffic relief plan, as well as interchange improvements or our talk about the transit center and what can we do there to expand public transit access to the area. I think it's all in bounds.
Okay, so with the items that we've brought up so far, that Wes has been lobbying for for so many years, and these items that I mentioned, where does that, where do you take that information? And how do you potentially put that into a plan that you're going to present to all the councils in Riverside County?
Yep. So, great question. So right now, so our executive director, our current executive director, is it speaking simultaneously to me at the Menifee City Council? And tomorrow, I'm at Harupa Valley. And so we're gathering this input from all of your colleagues around the county. And next month, we are going to present to the commission all the feedback we've received. And we're kind of doing this in real time. When you say, hey, what can we do about downtown Corona or the Santa Ana River Trail? We're throwing that into the mix of, this document is living and breathing on a daily basis. And so what we bring to them will include that feedback to the extent that we can make it feasible. We want to present a plan that we can deliver if it gets adopted. So it's in real time. We're going to meet tomorrow, and we're going to say, what did we hear in Menifee? What did we hear in Corona? Where's a place for this in the plan?
All right, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right, Aaron. I have no comments. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
I think at this point, Sylvia, did Joe want to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker card for this item.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Good evening, Joe Morgan, 206 of Grand. I feel like we're at the mall, sitting on Santa Claus's lap, telling them what we want for Christmas. And not in a good way. I was here when the 91 project was going on. I recall sitting in this room, watching a recording of the board, laughing at the congestion that they had caused over here. I also recall Mr. Haig didn't feel it was appropriate to comment about that, even while he's lived here. I recall sitting in this room, watching the project manager for the 91 laughing about how my neighbor's car got smashed on the roof by a piece of bracketing that fell off the Grand Bridge, laughing about it, well, I'll see you in court, blah, blah, blah. Nothing about any of the projects that they've done since that project has gotten any better. On balance, I think the traffic is worse in Corona because of RCTC. Everything has been worse. They've never brought any real positive developments to Corona that I've seen. They've done nothing but create deliberate congestion, and then come up here and brag about, well, we fixed some of the things that we created. When we opened up our toll lane, that created more congestion, but, you know, hey, good for us for mitigating part of it. The fact is, you can't get south on the 15 as fast now as you could before the toll lane opened up. And that's our future. Our future, when we're locked into RCTC and locked into their half-assed, half-baked projects, is we're going to be paying more and we're going to be getting less. We're going to be getting everywhere slower. They'll blame it on population increases when it's really their projects consistently. It's them doing bad things and poorly engineered projects over and over again. And meanwhile, we're going to be paying millions and millions more tax. So we got 40, 50 million. What's another 40, 50 million out of people's pockets? You know, we're paying for this. And now there's this kind of negotiation, well, we better get in, otherwise we might not get a piece of the pie. You know? And there's this consistent, really cynical thing where you basically are, they're always playing off the eastern part against the western part. Well, we got the votes here, and we got the votes there. And despite the wall, the wall's roughly, what, Banning or something? That's west? You know? The fact is, this money isn't going to be here. And the fact is, they promise things that they don't deliver. They don't deliver complete projects. You know, it's just enough. You know, I'd be fine if we just banned RCTC from coming into the city at all. We'd be better off. I'd be more fine with us just paying our own way. Just stay out of here. Stay completely away. They've brought nothing but bad news, and it's not going to get any better. Thank you.
John Donaldson, resident of Corona. And just a couple of things occurred to me listening to this presentation, and I'm not an expert. In fact, I'm retired, so I don't have to deal with a lot of this. But Wes, I would share with you that if I wanted to go to Dos Lagos from my house in Corona on Saturday morning, it would take me 45 minutes. It's 10 miles. I can ride my bike faster than that. I mean, that's just the way it is, and it's awful. And hopefully, something will fix it. We can't fix it. We don't have shovels, equipment, money. We don't have anything. We're relying on this agency to fix it, and now they want more money. A real astute political observer shared with the public several years ago, you don't get better government by giving them more money. And we're in a situation where they're asking for more money and promising they're going to do better. And history will tell us that it's kind of a promise that's hard to deal with. One of the points that was made in the presentation was, they have as many as 600 comments, public comments on this program, on their plan. I think the county has about 2 million people, is that right? Somewhere in that range? I did that percentage. That's 300ths of a percent of the people are stepping forward with comments on this. Now, that doesn't probably strike any of you as, you know, a great revelation, but 3/10ths of a percent, 300ths of a percent of the people are going to steer this project wherever it's going to go. That's a little scary. So for me, that means that we really are going to rely on you all to put in exceptionally good comments and help steer this thing in a good direction. Because, again, 600 people, and they're probably going to say, you're not putting an offer up on my house, or something to that nature. So again, I think that the last issue that I have seen is trucks. And nobody mentioned trucks. Maybe it was mentioned once. The day, Friday before Martin Luther King Weekend, I was going into Orange County at noon. The trucks were bumper to bumper from Corona all the way to the 91. The trucks were bumper to bumper from Corona all the way to the 91-55 split. I mean, it looked like a wall. It looked like we were trying to keep the people on the one side of 91 from crossing the other side. There must have been 1,000 trucks. They wanted to get out of town before the weekend. So, you know, we have to make sure that something about trucks are also in this plan. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Could I, I wanted to ask Mr. Haake a couple of questions now that they just kind of got, they broke loose. Can I ask Mr. Haake to come back up to the podium?
I think he's on his way.
Mr. Haake, I want to make sure that I understand this, kind of in plain English. But Caltrans is not doing, or does not have any plans for any roadwork in the inland empire? Do I understand that correctly?
Close. So is current Caltrans policy and strategy to not add capacity to the state highway system?
So, plain English, they don't want to add any lanes for people to help relieve traffic?
Correct.
Okay, so if Caltrans isn't doing anything, and most municipalities singularly cannot afford to take on a multimillion-dollar freeway project, RCTC is kind of taking the lead to supplement Caltrans? And what you're asking for today is guidance and feedback on what, not only do we as advocates for the city of Corona want, but also the citizens? What is it that the citizens feel is important for, to help relieve traffic? Because none of us up here are traffic engineers. Are traffic engineers right there. And out of frustration, we simply say, you know, why can't you make the 91 freeway 75 lanes wide? Which is probably the width that it needs to be to handle the amount of traffic. So the ideas are important, because, or really, the problems are important. What is the problem? And how do we engineer it to make it better? Is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
You are spot on.
Okay. So really and truly, what, one of the things that would be important, utilizing your QR code here, is to go on and tell RCTC what the problems are. And kind of work on a solution to fix it. For me, what's important, I think we know kind of where some of the problem parts are in Corona, and, you know, along the 91 and the 15. I'm still kind of stuck back in 2015, where what got completed wasn't the entire project, right? And I think that you tried to explain that to me yesterday. I've been thinking about that. It was multiple, a multitude of phases. And maybe we got Phase 1 done, and Phase 2 and Phase 3 didn't get done. And some of these projects would have been considered Phase 2 and Phase 3 in that. Is that correct?
That, the 91, what we call the 91 Project,
Right.
had many, many components to it. It had the interchanges, it had the express lanes, it had a general purpose lane, it had Second Street getting punched all the way through. It had a number of other things. There are things that we had in our environmental document for the whole, for what we wanted to do, what our aspiration was. What we built was what we had funding for. And there are still things from that environmental document that we still want to get done.
Are those in here?
Some of them are.
But not all of them?
I will have to go check with David Thomas, but I'm pretty sure all of them are. It's the 91 from 15 to Pierce. It's the eastbound lane from 241 to 71. And the third one is escaping me as I stand here.
71, 91.
Seventy, well, yeah.
So the missing pieces were 71, 91 interchange, the 15 and the 91 connector, the Pierce Street extension on both sides. So Pierce to Pierce on east and west. And then the eastbound lane from the 241 to the 71.
Okay, so of the projects that you wanted to do, but you only had funding for the, what you did, for what you ended up doing, how do we ensure that the projects that got pulled out of the 91 Project due to a lack of funding get done?
So that will be at the discretion of the commission. What I can tell you that the commission has done in the past with projects is they have prioritized projects that already have their environmental done, that have moved along in the process, that have been included in a previous plan. You know, that's why we're working on the I-15 Southern Extension right now from Cahalko down to Elsinore. That was another one of those big projects that we wanted to get done. And so those that are most ready to go and farthest along tend to get the money first. But it will be a prioritization discussion of the commission, should the resources be available.
Okay, and in your study with the proposal of this tax, you think that that $25 billion would give you the money over the next 20 or 30 years? The problem for me, and for probably all of the residents, is we don't really want to wait 30 years. In 30 years, the fix of today isn't going to be the fix of in 30 years, because we'll have an additional two cities of people, according to what you said, right? Two more Moreno Valleys. So it may be insufficient at that point.
Yep.
So for me, I'm just struggling with how do we get what we need in Corona? And like I said yesterday, I believe that the 91-15 is probably the greatest traveled intersection or interchange in the county. And until somebody shows me data, otherwise, I'm still going to believe that. To me, it's the first priority. So how do we get that done? How do we get those fixes done that were backed out of the original project? That probably have the environmental impact done, that is a project? I mean, how do we ensure that that's done?
So we're already kind of doing it. I mentioned earlier that that eastbound lane from 241 to 71, we've already jump-started that with the funding we have today to get it ready to be first in line when there's new funding available. So that's what we've got to keep doing, is jump-starting projects with what we have so that they can get in line. That's what we're doing with 15 as well.
Okay, so does that leave anything else that we're lacking from the original project?
No, not, again, off the top of my head, I can't think of something else that was in that environmental document. So I also want to say, council member, Measure A, which is the part of the funding we use to get this done, all it called for was one lane in each direction on the 91 in Corona. That's it. So we've delivered that, what we promised to the voters then. What we're trying to do now is the plus everything else that, at the time, the city of Corona said, hey, we need to get all this other stuff done. So it's part of the wish list that was created back then, that we're trying to complete.
Of projects that are freeway-related? Or projects that the city has? Street widening, you know, potholes, that type of stuff?
No, 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 I'm talking about the 91 corridor project. We wanted to address this holistically.
Right.
Yep.
I think what a lot of voters in Corona would look for is a completed 91 project that includes all of the things that were removed due to a lack of funding, which, you know, maybe is going to be there. I think the voters in Corona would really need to see that.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you for the feedback. Thank you.
All right, Aaron.
Thank you.
We have one more speaker code. A speaker code, speaker card? Tony, feel free to come up and speak in code.
Tom, I only speak English, thank you. Good evening, Tony Finaldi, South Corona residence, resident. I live off the 15 and Elsrito Road. Yeah, and I've seen how bad the 15 got right after the toll roads opened. So we charge people to create congestion, to fix it, and the vicious cycle continues. That's my observation at this point. I want to know where the heck are all the toll road monies going? There's so much money collected every single blessed hour of every day 24/7. Where'd it go? When the 91 opened, I understand there was record profits from this thing. So we don't have enough money? We've got way more projects than money we can raise from the toll roads? That's what I'm hearing. I'm going to state the obvious. You guys know this. Corona just approved 1% sales tax increase. So we're going to do it again, will be almost 10% if we do this. Great, yeah, we need that like a hole in the head. Anyway, I'll be brief, thank you.
All right, that was good English, Tony. Moving along. I don't think we need to, oh, we do have to approve it. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right. Did anybody push the button for?
Just to be clear, that's for the meeting minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, the meeting minutes.
Yeah, make that very clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have, okay, I'll read it. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes? And Jackie seconds. Vote your conscience. All right, moving along. Consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member or any person in attendance may request the item be removed for further consideration. Would my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion? Tony? Nine? Wesley?
Number nine.
Nine? Just nine, right?
Just nine.
Okay. Ms. Casillas, a zero. Jim's a zero, I'm a zero. Sylvia?
Mayor, yes, I have a speaker card for Agenda Item Number 12.
12? All right. Okay, with that, would anybody like to make a motion? Oh, Casillas is on a second kick tonight. All right. Oh, Steiner, Steiner ninja'd in on that one.
Mayor, we need your vote.
Oh, yeah. Steiner flustered me. Yeah, you give one shout-out. All right, number nine, Jacob, who gets to take charge of this?
Mayor, this, we'll ask Donna Finch to take this one.
Oh, boy. Good luck, DK.
Ms. Finch, I didn't want a staff report. I just wanted to ask a question, and I'm sure council members speak. Did you want a staff report?
No.
Okay. So I just, what I didn't see was what the increase in security was actually going to be. What was the, what did that look like? Other than, I think it went from 22 to 83 hours, or if I read that correctly? I just want to know, does that mean that there will be a security guard for every hour that the library is open?
Yes, that's correct. So the hours increased from 32 hours to 84 hours at the library alone. So this not only covers the full amount of time that the library is open during the week, that's 53 hours. We will also have the security guard on-site, beginning when staff arrives. So we have staff that gets there at 7 o'clock. The library doesn't open until 10:00. So we want to make sure we have security there when staff comes in, so there's no issues with the exterior of the library, which they've had issues in the past. And then also after closing, to make sure our staff gets safely to their vehicles. And then in addition to the library, the security guard is also offering services for the utility department for their household hazardous waste collection events. And security is providing assistance for closing the park restrooms at certain locations where we've had challenges in the past.
Okay, so at the library, it's a patrolling service, or patrolling security? So they're not going to be stationed, like, at the front door? They're going to be, kind of have rounds that they have to make?
That's correct.
Okay, that was the only question that I had. Thank you.
Go ahead, Wes.
Thank you. I just had a, I was just curious that cost wasn't mentioned in the staff report. I know that the, I asked the city manager earlier about, you know, that was a factor, and he said it was, but it wasn't the only factor. And I'm a little, and this company was in the middle. I'm a little bit concerned, because, you know, cost is a thing. And we're, you know, we're not talking about, and no offense to the security folks watching, we're not talking about, you know, someone that's going to be providing consulting service to, it's a security guard. And I'm not saying that we use the cheapest one. I'm just saying why it wasn't weighted more.
I'm not sure the justification for the weighting. I know as an RFP, cost is not the only thing that we take into consideration. So the vendor is evaluated based off of experience. There's several different factors. I can, we can go back to purchasing to find out what the actual breakdown was for the percentage, if that's information that you needed.
Yeah, I'd love to know.
That was when the RFP was set up.
And I mean, I think a part of a larger question is that, when we have things like this, is there a way for us to? Why wouldn't, I mean, what's the weighting? Is, would, is cost, you know, for an item like this, is cost more important? I know, like, some of the other things that we do when we're outdoing infrastructure improvements, we have to take the lowest bid, because that's by law. And I'm just curious why we wouldn't, why cost wouldn't be a bigger factor? Or be weighed as a bigger factor? I guess I don't know the difference, but.
Yeah, I think your question is, we don't, you don't know what the weighting was for cost.
Right.
Yeah. We do, it is included. We could certainly provide that information. And just as a note, cost was called out as one of the factors in the staff report.
Do you have more questions, Wes?
Give me just a second.
All right. Take your time.
Yeah, experience staffing and cost, I guess order is important, right? See, I'd like to know, I'd like to know what the weighting is. Just curious, especially if they weren't, if they were middle of the pack of, and we had a lot of competition. I mean, I'm excited the person's from Corona, but that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Wes. Sylvia, are there any, does Don want to speak?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Oh, sorry, Don. Okay, with that, does anybody want to make a motion? I'll second, and I push the button. No? Did you want me to open it back up, Wes? I didn't mean to, okay. Okay, number 12, Sylvia, somebody from the public pulled that one?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker card for this item.
All right, Don.
Evening, I'm Don Fuller, I'm a resident here. This item, number 12, what got my attention was that I noticed it was for two additional law clerks. And then I noticed it was for a budgetary transfer of $5,253. And I'm not a lawyer, but I did make a fair amount of my living as an expert witness. And I've been around the legal business enough to to know that 5,200 bucks sort of gets you about to the first morning coffee break before that money is down the drain. So I was wondering about that. It just seemed like, I thought it was a typo, and missing like about three zeros after it. And so I was talking to Mr. Tucker about something else, and I, and we got into this issue. And he told me this really good story. So it just seems to me like this is a chance for Mr. Durlath to crow a little bit about what a good deal this is. And so I just thought, rather than just breezing over it, and just everybody passing it and going on down the road, this is a chance for Mr. Durlath to pat himself on the back a little bit and explain to all the rest of us what a good deal this is for the city.
Well, I appreciate that, Don, but it won't be me patting myself on the back. It's the quality of the law clerks that we're attracting now at this point. Just because of remote work, we're attracting law clerks from Notre Dame Law School and other top law schools across the country, who are from this area generally, but have gone to school elsewhere. Up until this point, we've mostly attracted from local law firms, law schools, maybe as far as way as Chapman, you know, maybe occasionally in LA. But, so we're, we've got a wider reach. The $5,000 is a little bit misleading, because it's just for the remainder of this fiscal year. Because the way that recruiting for law students works, we make those offers now for basically them starting after they get done with school, so May-June, but that's this fiscal year, this budget. So we needed to add them to this budget, so that we can make the offer now. And so that 5,000 is just to cover May and June. But it's still a good deal. You know what minimum wage is out there? Well, we're paying these law clerks, highly qualified law clerks, about $21 an hour. So they are an incredible. So they are an incredible deal in comparison. So on average, each law clerk might cost us $10,000 or so a year, maybe a little bit more.
Well, $21 an hour is not going to cover their billables, once they're all passed it, because that didn't cover my billables, and I was just the witness. So I just...
Once they graduate.
I just thought it was a good deal.
Yeah, we won't keep them once they graduate, I guarantee you.
Yeah. And apparently, a lot of them like to be around Mr. Higginbotham, who is your litigator, who has apparently got some courtroom prowess.
He does.
So, so I just thought this was a good deal for the city, and just thought it would...
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so that's all. Everybody get home safe.
Thank you, Don. That was good crowing, Dean. Nicely done. Do any of my colleagues have any comments, or...
No, I'll move to approve the item.
Okay. Anybody want to second it? You have to push the button, Wes. All right, 5-0. Good job, Don. Good job, Dean. Up next, communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comments on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit for your comments. Once called upon, feel free to speak. Say your name, city of residence, and any other information you care to share. Ms. Edwards? I'm assuming the fire guys pulled some speaker cards. Did anybody else?
Mayor, I have six speaker cards for communication from the public.
Oh, boy. All right. Well, we're back with Don.
Hi, it's me again. I noticed that there's a hazardous waste disposal program coming up in a few weeks, and I brought this up from time to time, at previous times. And that is my suggestion that you include with the hazardous waste disposal day, document shredding. And I brought this up several years ago, and I think you had document shredding a couple of times at those hazardous waste days, and then kind of went away. And it seemed like it was well-attended. There were a long line of cars, people trying to get rid of stuff, and I guess they're probably trying to hide from the feds or something. So that's all I just was, I don't know if any of it was classified documents or not, didn't know about that. So I just was making a suggestion, if you could try to include document shredding and put that on the list. It's probably too late for this time, but put it on the list for future hazardous waste disposal days. Bringing it up again, that's all.
All right, thank you, Don. Up next, ladies first.
I'm Richard Rogers, and I live in Corona, 1037 Medeview Court. I am here just to give a little background before my neighbor, Mrs. Chacon, and issues her problem. Our, our area was developed in 1975, and at that time, somebody decided they wanted to plant these stone pine trees. And some people know what they are, and some people don't, but they tear everything up. Their roots go under houses, along Medeview Court, and Greenbrier also has the stone pines. And, and Mrs. Chacon, I don't, I have trouble speaking, folks, okay? But...
You're doing good. Take your time.
I also forget.
Wes forgets a lot, too.
She needs to present a problem that she tried to get fixed, and the tree roots have gone into her driveway and sort of destroyed it. And she, she came to, I was getting the, the Medeview Court fixed from the speed bumps caused by the roots going, going under the road, raising the road up so they can, saying get some water. And while they were repairing a Medeview Court in front of her house, she asked the supervisor if the city could fix her driveway. And he says, yes, put in a request, and we can, we can probably get that done for you. And so she submitted the request last October, and I will let her have my time.
Hello, I'm Martha Chacon. I'm here because I was denied my driveway being fixed, or given, you know, the financial aid, I need to fix my driveway, because I didn't submit it with, within a six-month occurrence. I, when I wrote on there, I'd been living there for a year, so they assumed the problem had been there for a year. In my eyes, I don't care if it's been there for a year, or five years, if I've been living there. If the roots from that tree are damaging my property, it needs to be fixed. But what I don't understand, and the reason I'm here, is how are you able to fix the problems on the street and the sidewalk in front of my property? That, that all that damage was done, and I have pictures here of the damage done, and you guys fix the street, compensate for my driveway? People are tripping on my driveway because of it. Yeah, you've tripped twice coming to my property. I don't have the money to pay for it. I'm raising six grandkids. I can't afford it. So I'm just here because I don't understand how you guys could deny it, but yet you could fix the street in front of my house. So, that's it.
Ms. Chacon, like I asked, we'll, I don't know the answer to that either, but I definitely want to get, get you to the right person that we can get some answers.
Yeah, I went up to your legal department, and they said, no, that I was denied. But yet, I just don't get it.
Okay, we'll, we'll try and get you some answers.
Thank you.
Yep.
And the trees have been there since 1975. Okay, so...
If I can, Mayor.
It's a little more than six months.
We'll, we'll follow up. It's my department, Legal and Risk Management oversees the claims, and, and so we have issued the denial. In the, in a short statement, the reason is, we own the streets, and we're responsible for the streets, and we're also responsible for people tripping on the sidewalks, but we're not responsible for people tripping on the driveways.
I understand that.
That's the distinct difference between where the roots are coming up. But we'll call you, we'll follow up, and we'll have a more thorough discussion.
Thank you.
So those are your trees?
Well, they're shared responsibility trees. They're both, they, they are trees that were originally planted by developers, in, in a lot of cases, but they're not city trees. You're responsible for watering them. You're, you know, we will, we will maintain the limbs, and we routinely do so. But the Minnesota Code and the city's history is, we, we don't take responsibility for where the roots go, unless you've put us on notice and said, the roots are getting near my driveway, do something about it, and we will either take the tree out or take the roots. But we can't be responsible for the roots getting to that driveway, and us not knowing about it.
The trees have gone for like, maybe 100 feet or more, under the houses even.
Yeah. I wouldn't even doubt if it went under my house. I just purchased this house, and when we bought it, it did have a lot of damage in the house, but they, the engineer said it was settling. So, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And the city won't let me cut the tree down, because it's their tree.
Well, if, if, I would, I would refer you to community services, because if that tree is causing damage, the roots are causing damage, and you request it to be taken down, the city, we do have a process for assessing that and taking the tree down, because we don't want it to cause damage in that regard.
Thank you. All right. Fort Nine, what trouble do you have?
All good things. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I'm Matt Fortine, Fire Captain from Engine 3, and also the new President of the Corona Firefighters Association. I just wanted to come tonight and thank you for your support. This last weekend, we had our 44th Annual Auto Extrication Seminar here in Corona, from humble beginnings to now a nationally recognized auto extrication program that's certified by the California State Fire Marshal. It's a three-day class with a lecture and some basic extrication techniques on day one, and then two days of advanced extrication techniques. We've got eight pits, vehicles up against a pole, upside down on, on some berms. We have a new car pit with brand-new cars prototypes from Kia, Hyundai, and Mercedes. Then we also have a heavy lift area. We had donations from Robertson's Ready Mix, and from the Riverside Transit Agency with a big transit bus. We were able to put scenarios on where vehicles were under those, and we're lifting them off, teaching our students how to go about that. And in total, we cut up 121 cars this weekend. We had 134 students from 51 departments. A lot of them were local, from the West Coast. We also had students from Hawaii. We had from Mexico, and then also Corona firefighters there. So the Corona firefighter sponsors Corona firefighters through the program for some value added back to the city. We run the program like an incident, like we would a real incident. So we had overhead, we had finance, logistic, planning. We had our instructors from the, from the Corona Fire Department, about 40 of our members, and just some very high-level subject matter experts across the field. We brought in volunteers from the California Conservation Corps, from the Marina Valley College Medic Program, from Corona High School's auto shop, and then explorers from Riverside Hemet, and then, of course, our own wonderful Corona Fire Explorers. I just wanted to give a big thanks to the other city departments, and for other Corona labor, for the impact. We, we take over all of Corp Yard. We make a little bit of a mess, and we try to clean it up real quick, and I know that impacts the rest of the city, so we're very appreciative of letting us do that. And then lastly, I'm just so proud of our women and men of the CFA for their excellence in the community, and to the fire service at large. So thank you very much for your support.
Matt, we even ordered you up some rain this weekend, too, right? So you could add a little extra training in the rain.
Yeah, we put some, some real-life stuff into works. It was a little bit slippery, but kept everybody safe.
Great, thanks for coming out, Matt. Ruler, please hit the update.
Thank you, guys.
And then we heard that the chief was the enemy of Funnigan this year, and not dropping anything from any great distance. Very, very sad, but thanks, chief.
Way to go, chief. Tony?
Finaldi, South Corona resident. He just told me they destroyed a Maybach. Can you believe that? Anyway, moving on. Found out something interesting today. You guys had a meeting this afternoon and talked about adding yet another very expensive project to the city's list of projects. That's a $50 million renovation, I guess, of the old City Hall building, originally a high school. One of our jewels, actually, very cool facility, which I think is currently underutilized, and something cool should be done with it. Thing is, you've got that, you've got the road diet and, and so forth on Main and, Main and Sixth, you got a $20 million fire station, $100 million park. It's a lot of projects. And I understand, so this $50 million renovation, I'm not sure exactly what it entails. I heard something about a culinary thing. Okay, that's kind of neat, but... So we're getting a loan to do this, essentially bonds, right? Hmm. We just had a 1% sales tax. Remember, we talked about that earlier? Why don't we wait till we have the money to do stuff? I mean, you, you put your, too many eggs in one basket, all, you know, many of the eggs are rotten. You do one or two good projects, and you do them well, that's what I'd like to see. So all of them have merit. All the projects I just listed have great merit, but you don't want to spread yourselves thin, right? Go into it carefully, eyes wide open, do your studies, know what things really cost. We just build a, bid a public building last week in Desert Hot Springs, happens to be a fire station. So what, what was it? Nine, 9,000, just under 10,000 square feet, 9,800 square feet. Works out to $958 a square foot. Call it 1,000. Ouch, ouch. Things keep going up every single year. Again, I, I advise caution here. Again, I'm, you know, this is, hearing about this and getting a loan to do it, sounds like if I went out and bought a $400,000 sports car, could probably qualify for the loan. Is it prudent? Fiscally, not. Not for me, anyway. And I'm seeing sort of the same things going on here. So I advise caution. Thanks for hearing me out.
Good evening, Joe Morgan, 2063. It's really wild to hear that a resident has to report damages to their house from a city tree before they're evident, before they're visible. You know, that I feel like the roots are under there, they haven't pushed up my driveway yet, but in the future, they may push up my driveway. Seeing as roots are under the ground, it seems unreasonable. You know, it seems like if they reported them at the time when they saw the damage, that's what would usually be required in court. But, you know, no? So my, my, my extensive people's court experience says otherwise, but... So regarding the meeting this afternoon, it was pretty interesting that, I mean, again, this is the third month in a row that we've taken up multi, you know, well, the last, see, the previous one was the Parks Plan, and then there was the Trails Master Plan, and then now is the Downtown Plan and Financing, that you guys basically approved, you know, we won't call it a vote, even though you said, I support it, I support it, I support it, I may, I might support it, and then you gave direction to the city manager, which amounts to a legal vote. But, you know, regardless, that you do it consistently at an afternoon meeting, that's not a regular meeting, that you could be doing it in this room at this time at the regular meeting, but you choose not to. And I said it last month, and I'll say it again, that seems deliberate. It seems deliberate that you want to take these important items out of the public's eye, and keep the riffraff out of the room, and keep other people from being involved in it. If it's not deliberate on each of your individual parts, it's deliberate on the part of the city manager. You know, one way or another, it seems a deliberate pattern to try to keep everything, you know, kind of under wraps. You barely have even talked about it prior. Well, we're, we're gathering up this, we're, we're buying up this property in closed session, or buying up that property. You guys know about this plan, and you guys knew, you know, what the larger aims were, but none of us knew. You know, so you're buying up the Corona Mall again, you're, you're setting about, you know, buying all this property, and then you've got a plan that you sort of unleashed today, and then said, yeah, we'll go for $200 million, $200 million bucks. And, and you dropped this thing about, you know, a culinary institute, or some kind of culinary facility, and don't even say what it is. But you're like, yeah, no problem. Let's do it. No problem. What the hell are you even doing? You know, and, and you got really nobody besides me crowing about it at the afternoon meeting, you know, because I guess that's the plan. You know, it's easy enough to just brush me aside, it's fine, I'm used to it. But it's wrong. It's wrong. It's wrong. It's wrong. It's wrong. It's wrong. It's inappropriate, you shouldn't do it. You should be conducting the business where the public, your public's business, where the public can easily see it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Joe. Sylvia, are there any more?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
Okay. Up next is Public Hearings, number 14, General Plan Amendment 2023-02, to amend the general plan use designation for 5.15 acres located at 430 West Foothill Parkway from general commercial to high-density residential. 15 to 36 dwelling units per acre, and up to 75 DU AC for senior units. Do any of my council members want a staff report on this item? Jackie? No? Jim? No? Okay. Sylvia, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, you do need to open the public hearing first.
I was hoping to. All right, the public hearing is open. Sylvia, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we did not receive any speaker cards.
Okay.
So moved.
Well, I have to close it, Wes.
Oh, sorry.
Public hearing is now closed. Did, did anybody want to move?
So moved.
Okay. Did it go through? Oh, there it is.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
It's all good. Okay, number 17, Community Facilities Plan Amendment 2023-01, to use the South Corona Communit-- Number 17, Community Facilities Plan Amendment 2023-01, to use the South Corona Community Facilities Plan to change the land use designation of 5.15 acres from commercial to senior citizen residential for property located at 430 West Foothill Parkway. Do any council members want a staff report on this item?
I think it's a great project. I'd like to hear it.
You would.
Right?
Yeah, I'd like to hear it, too.
All right. Is that... Oh, look at that. Joanne Coletta, Planning and Development Director, will present this item.
Thank you and good evening. So this application is tied to the previous application used to prove, which is the general plan amendment. This developer is proposing to develop a piece of property off of Foothill Parkway, and in order to do that, they do have to process several land use applications with this. One was the general plan amendment, the second being the Community Facilities Plan Amendment. There is also a specific plan amendment as well as a precise plan. And given that they're all tied together, this presentation is really just going to go through all of those applications so you get a really good overview. The property is currently designated commercial. This was part of the Mountain Gate Shopping Center that you see there on the screen. The shopping center is about 10 acres, and originally, this five-acre remnant piece was intended to be Phase Two of that center. However, over the last 20 years, there hasn't really been much opportunity based on the market to add additional commercial uses. Therefore, there's always been an inquiry as to what can potentially be done on this property. And currently, we had a proposal come forth in order to do the senior citizen housing, which would be assisted living, and that is the application that you have before you this evening. The map that you see there on the right is the Community Facilities Plan in South Corona. As you can see there, the property is currently designated commercial. In order to allow for any assisted senior housing development, we need to change that land use, so the applicant is proposing to change that from commercial to senior citizen residential, and that's the exhibit that you see there on the bottom. In addition to that, we also need to amend the Mountain Gate specific plan. This is where the property is currently located. Same thing as with the CFPA, it's currently zone commercial, therefore, it will be changed to senior citizen residential, which will correspond with the other two land use applications. Additionally, they will also be establishing development standards in relation to the senior citizen residential zone, because we currently do not have that designation within the specific plan, so we do need to draft those standards in order to facilitate future development. When it comes to the precise plan application, which is also on the agenda this evening, this here shows the site plan of the proposed development. And as you can see here, it is located on Foothill Parkway with primary access coming from that street. This will be one building that will be two stories high, and it will have 107 units. 75 of those units will be assisted, and 32 will be set aside for memory care. There is also one and two-story... One and two-bedroom units, and the square footage is 400 square feet to up to 1,100 square feet. And this development also provides up to 109 parking spaces, and that is consistent with our municipal code for the parking requirements for this type of facility. There's also several residential amenities that will also be provided, and you can see there that the central area is located in the middle of the building, so the units are actually going to wrap around the recreational facilities. And then on the side adjacent to the shopping center, which is on the upper part of your screen, there's going to be additional outdoor amenities as well. This project does sit lower than Mountain Gate Drive, about 10 feet, so there will be no access on the south side, but there will be secondary emergency access through the shopping center if needed. But as I indicated, all of the primary access is going to come off Foothill Parkway.
Ms. Coletta, do you know, will there be access on the south side of the property for residents to walk... Just walk to the grocery store?
Not on the south side because of the grade differential. They will need to go down through Foothill and access it through the front.
Okay. Okay.
This here just shows you a nice example of what the building will look like. It's a Spanish design, as I indicated, it's two stories. This look is very complementary to what we currently have in the Mountain Gate area as well, in the surrounding area as well. So there's a lot of good tile roofs and a lot of stonework, as well as some smooth plaster finish, as well as some overhangs as well. So overall, very attractive. I just thought this would be important information to provide to the council. This is a facility that will have full services available to seniors. It's also going to be regulated by the... Licensed by the Department of Social Services as a residential care facility for the elderly. They provide 24-hour staffing. There are also meals included in this package for residents that do that. There's also assistance with daily living. Before a resident goes into a facility like this, they are examined by a physician so they know the type of level of care that they may need. They also provide transportation and shuttle services for individuals that may need to go to the doctor or do other types of errands. They also have access to health and medical services. There's also exercise and wellness programs, as well as social and recreational activities. So it's just an all-around holistic environment. I would have to say it's very similar to what you have over on Main Street, which is by Kisco. It's very much the same type of facility. And this developer does have a lot of experience in this. They actually operate all throughout California, and this is what they focus on. So we are recommending approval of all the applications this evening.
I just... Thank you, Ms. Coletta. The only question I had was, I think at the Planning Commission, there was a question... There are a... A question that came up on fencing, a couple of different... One, I think it was shown on slide... That one. Go back. I can't tell what number... The next slide. No, go forward, sorry. There you go. On that bottom piece, that looked like a lot of iron and wanted to see some pilasters or something. I think that got brought up in the meeting, but I agreed with that. I thought that was a good idea. And it is... I know that was a conversation. I don't know if that got put in into the plan, and I know that there were some question about the wall between Heritage Park, and I did see the letter from Mr. Miller. It looks like they worked that out. So I just... My only question was about those pilasters, if those got put in.
We can verify with the applicant. I don't believe... I believe that was a discussion at the Planning and Housing Commission, and the applicant has since met with the board at the Heritage Museum, and they also came up with an agreement on the type of fencing they wanted along that common property line, so you didn't have this tall, monolithic concrete wall. So they are agreeing to break that down with retaining walls as well as wrought iron fencing.
Great. Okay. I know that's really under 16 instead of this one, right? But, all right. I'll just wait. Thank you.
All right. Jackie, did you... Okay. With that, we would like to open... The public hearing is now open. Ms. Sylvia, did anybody want to speak on this?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Does anybody want to make a motion?
You have to read it. It's page seven.
Okay, that's why you guys were hesitating. Introduced by title only in wayfull reading of consideration of ordinance number 3389, first reading of an ordinance to amend the South Corona Community Facilities Plan land use designation from commercial to senior citizen residential for 5.15 acres located at 430 West Foothill Parkway within Village Four of the South Corona Community Facilities Plan, CFPA 2023-0001.
Thanks, Jackie. I'll second. Can we vote, Sylvia? Hello, Wes, second. Good job, Wes. All right, number 15. I feel like we're doing reruns. Specific Plan 2023 through four to the Mountain Gate specific plan to change the land use of 5.15 acres located at 430 West Foothill Parkway from commercial to senior citizen residential and establish commensurate development standards for the senior citizen residential blankety-blank. Does any council member want a staff report on this item? No? Okay. The public hearing is now opened. Does Sylvia, what do you got?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
All right, the public hearing is now closed, and can we vote, Sylvia?
So moved.
Oh. Does anybody want to move? A second. The buttons were pushed.
Yep. So introduced by title only in wayfull reading of the consideration of ordinance number 3388, first reading of the ordinance approving the... An amendment to the Mountain Gate specific plan, SP 89-01, the change in land use designation from 5.15 acres from commercial to senior citizen residential and establish the corresponding development standards for a senior citizen residential designation, SPA 2023-0004.
All right. Thanks, Wes. Can we vote, Sylvia? Okay. This is not an advertised public hearing. Number 16. Never know what's coming with it. Precise Plan 2023 through 06, to review the site plan, architecture, landscaping, and other physical features associated with the development of 107-unit assisted senior living facility on 5.15 acres located at 430 West Foothill Parkway in the proposed senior citizen residential land use designation of the Mountain Gate specific plan. Ms. Edwards, are there... Well, let's just do this. Do you guys have any comments?
I just wanted to say, and just in general, thank you for the applicant for going forward. This has been a very, very difficult empty lot. I've lived within a half a mile of this location probably the last 25 years, and I've seen people come and go, including former Ram quarterback Vince Ferragamo and several others that could not get past the insane amount of CCNRs that are over this property. And I want to say congratulations for... To the applicant for outlasting and getting to this point, and I am frankly very excited to see that, even though I will miss the purple flowers that pop up in that lot, and I have cheated and gone over there and grabbed some flowers for my wife before. So I just want to say thank you and looking forward to it happening, and it looks like it's going to be a great facility, so thank you.
Are those protected flowers?
They are not protected flowers.
All right. Anybody else in the room gone and stole flowers from over there? Sylvia, oh, the public hearing is now opened. Is... Are there any blue cards or confessions for this project?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item. We did receive correspondence from the Corona Heritage Park in support of the item. The council has a copy of their letter, and it will also be filed with the meeting minutes.
Thank you, Sylvia. The public hearing is now closed, and do we have a motion? Wes, Jackie? Tony's a hard mayor to follow. Administrative Reports, number 18, Proposed Riverside County Transportation Commission Traffic Relief Plan Update. Savat Khampu, Public Works Director, will present this item, and good luck, Savat.
Mayor, do you think we need to hear it again? We just heard it an hour ago.
Yeah, I don't...
Same thing, and I think we should wait until something's actually brought back to us that says more than what we heard from Mr. Hake.
Yeah, that's good wisdom, Jim. You didn't get any coaching on this, did you?
No, I've heard it once. I don't want to hear it again.
Okay. All right. All in favor of not hearing this again? Raise...
You don't have to vote on that. You can just not take any action, and we'll bring it back at another time if you like.
Is it the exact same presentation that Mr. Khampu made before?
It's not identical. It's simply covering the same topic again, over again. I think if I'm hearing Councilmember Steiner correctly, because it's been discussed and there's going to be more information forthcoming, the idea is we hold off until we get more information and then bring that back for council discussion, once you've got a final draft plan.
I would like to... One thing we didn't cover today when Mr. Hake was here is, I think the idea is maybe for us to put a letter to... I know he's still here, but he's not talking right now. We're not supposed to talk to him, he's in the crowd. That maybe an idea for us to put together a letter with some changes that we would like to see to the plan, some of the things that we talked about today, and I think that the Director Khampu maybe have some other, you know, things that we might want to put in. I think there was some talk of percentages that would go back to potholes and other things. Maybe we could incorporate that into a letter and formally submit it?
I'm all for it. Jacob can...
I'm in favor of a formal... Of a formal letter, you know, stating where we stand. It just... I don't know where we stand.
There you have it, Wes.
I feel like we told Mr. Hake that the projects that we thought might be needed, maybe Mr. Khampu could just reach out to him if there's any other items that he thinks that we didn't mention that would be good to include, should the thing ever pass.
I think the one thing we want to make sure that gets into the plan is the things that aren't in there, like I think I mentioned the having rail on the 15. That's not in the plan.
No, but Mr. Hake said he took all of our comments with everything that we...
Yeah, I'm just saying, okay. That's fine, either way.
I don't think there's any harm in formalizing it, I just...
That's my point.
How about if Wes and Savat get together and write a letter?
Okay.
Do you guys agree? Cool with that?
So what I would suggest is that we collect any information that any of you would like to see collected. We can agendize that and bring that back to make sure everyone's good with that list, and we can send it off.
Okay. Wes?
Good.
Cool. All right. We don't need to vote on that, right?
For all that. We don't need to vote, Mayor, but I do have a speaker card for this item.
Go ahead, Joe.
I would suggest that you abide by what you say you abide by, which is supporting development and jobs here, instead of, you know, we need to have more lanes, and we need to be more beholden to RCTC, that you ought to worry about development here, that, you know, the state kind of has a point about just building capacity, greasing the tracks to go to Orange County and back, you know, when we... As Mr. Speaker has said many, 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 many times, that we should be talking about building jobs out here, instead of building ways to go to jobs out there, you know? So that... I think that your efforts would be better spent doing that rather than asking Santa Claus for things that we probably aren't going to get. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Joe. Shout out to Santa. So I think we're good for now on that one. Let's move along to Legislative Matters. Ordinance Amending... Ordinance Amending, ordinance number 3245, 3255, 3273, 3292, and 3305, to update the prima facie speed limits on certain street segments in the city of Corona. Does any council member want a staff report on this? No? No? Good? All right. Sorry, no staff report, Rosie. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker comments?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay. In that case, do we have a motion? You might get off lucky on this one.
I'll make the motion this time, since you have to read it, right?
You do.
Introduced by title only in wayfull reading of ordinance number 3390, an ordinance of the city of Corona, California, amending ordinance numbers 3245, 3255, 3273, 3292, and 3305, to update the prima facie speed limits on certain street segments in the city of Corona.
And I think we have a second. Somebody pushed a button.
I don't show a second on my screen.
I can't push it. Okay. 5-0. We get new speed limits. Boards and Commissions, reports from City Council, commissioners, and staff for the following boards. Library Board of Trustees, none. Planning and Housing Commission, we have number 20. Precise Plan 2023 through eight, to review the site plan, architecture, fencing, and landscaping for 19 single-family dwelling units proposed on 4.73 acres located on the northwest corner of Taylor Avenue and Citron in the R1-8.4 zone. Single-family residential, 8,400 square feet minimum lot size. Applicant Brian Bergeron, foremost, Pacific Group. Applicant Brian Bergeron, foremost Pacific group. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, I do have one speaker card for this agenda item and we also received correspondence in opposition of the item. The council has the correspondence and it'll also be attached to the meeting minutes.
Thank you Sylvia. Joe?
Good evening again. Hopefully this is the last time you hear from me tonight. This is a pretty disturbing project. These guys are kind of, they're using the ADU laws to basically put a detached town home development in a single-family neighborhood. They're putting little, little tiny little block houses on the front. So let's say a 1,200 square foot house with a 600 square foot footprint, stick it towards the front as far forward as they can get so they can have room to put two other dwellings, one attached ADU and one detached ADU that's the same size as the other house. So when they say it's going to be, what, 19 homes? And that's kind of what was pitched at? No, no, this is just going to be the same thing, the same pattern of development that's in the existing neighborhood. It's really three times that. And the fact that it's all going to be rentals despite, you know, when they were asked at the meeting about, you know, whether these were going to be for sale, they're like, well, you know, we got two parts of our company and we haven't really decided which part of it's going to take it over. And basically they're all going to be rentals. It's basically a detached town home development within a single-family neighborhood. It's a bait and switch and it's the end around the zoning rules. And you don't have to go for it. This thing doesn't look like the neighborhood. It's not consistent architecture despite the fact that there's a two-story house in the neighborhood. That doesn't mean this is a two-story neighborhood. You know, you can object to this on objective development or design standards. It may not just be the 19, but it's certainly going to be less bad. You have the power to make it less bad than what it's likely going to be. So one of the things that's made the ADU thing palatable is for the most part, it's an owner and the owners are responsible for renting or leasing the ADUs out. So they have somebody that they can get along with that they've met, they've vetted. This is going to be basically an apartment complex sharing a driveway. You know, so if you think about the drama of basically a single-family residence lot with one driveway sharing with three families living there. You're going to have three dwelling units sharing one residential lot, all managed by a management company. That's not what this neighborhood is expecting. That's not what this neighborhood deserves. You can say, you know what? Build some houses up front that look like the rest of the neighborhood. If there's an ADU, there's an ADU. But, and I know you can't do anything about whether it's rented or not, but you don't have to go along with this. You don't have to take this lying down. These guys should have been honest when they came here and they weren't. And you should hold them to being honest. And you should enforce the design standards of that neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thanks Joe. Would any of my council colleagues like to take no action or set the item for review? Tony?
I'd like to set the item for review. I'd like to talk to the developer and ask some questions.
Jackie? Jim?
Yeah, I was thinking, I mean, I wanted to ask Joanne a question, but maybe by setting it for review, we could just get a presentation on just what all, what are the rules are. I didn't pick up on a third ADU or a third unit. I saw the residents and then an ADU in the back. So I didn't pick up on a third one. So I think just for clarification, sending it in for review to get a proposal on it would probably help us all.
I think I'd like to better understand as well, like what are, what our true jurisdiction is, like what we can actually do in this case. And so I think for setting it for review would help us do that.
Yeah, I'm all in on setting it for review. Personally, I'd like to kill it. So there's your, there's your guidance. Number 21. Planning and Housing Commission Report. Precise Plan 2022 to review the site plan, architecture, landscaping, and other physical features associated with the development of two industrial buildings totaling 334,520 square feet located at 1375 Magnolia Avenue and the Business Park Land Use Designation of the Corona Magnolia Specific Plan. Applicant Jeremy Mape, sorry Jeremy, B9 Magnolia Owners. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Would any of my colleagues like to take no action or set the item for review?
Take no action.
Take no action.
I'm no action as well. So you're good there. I think that's it. Number 22, Regional Meeting Report.
It's me.
Update from Council, the illustrious Councilmember Jackie Casillas on the Western Riverside Council of Governments WRCOG, meeting of March 4.
The consent counter was pretty straightforward, but we did have two things that I'd like to report out on. One is, we reported back on a strategic planning session. I was part of the ad hoc committee for the guiding principles and mission statement revisions for WRCOG. And ultimately, this is just us trying to shore up the guiding principles for this commission to avoid, you know, mistakes made in the past. And so we set up four guiding principles. First is to stay true to our mission. Second, to prioritize fairness across the county. Third is to earn public trust and just be super transparent with all the actions taken in the agency. And fourth was to think with a long-term focus. The mission statement remains the same. The mission of the Western Riverside Council of Governments is to facilitate plan and identify funding opportunities for critical infrastructure projects and implement regionally significant programs that benefit its member agencies and the communities that they serve. So we voted on that and that was pretty straightforward. And the second thing is that we talked about our fiscal year 2324 budget update and we did have some major changes in our TUMF IRN and investment earnings. So there's a report out of that. The General Fund had an increase of about 1.5 million in revenues and also an increase in expenditures of just under $200,000. The IRN Fund had a decrease in revenues and expenditures, but that's just offset to another time. And so we had a snapshot of the quarter two amendments and then we moved on to talk about different programs like Clean Cities, Solid Waste, and our resilience program. So I know that that's all really thrilling and exciting to you all. I just want to share big picture that WRCOG remains, we're continuing on this steady path of setting good policy and strong rules. And if anything really exciting comes up, I'll be sure to share it up.
Oh boy. It's good to have good policy and strong rules. Thank you Jackie. Update from, oh, the next one is update from Councilmember Tony Diderio on the Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority, also known as RCA, meeting of March 4.
Thank you Mayor. Just two things that I want to report out. We had an update from our state legislative advocates talking about the shortfall in the budget for the state. The challenge is that there are cuts into programs RCA competes for money for. However, you'll see up on the map here, or up on the agenda, or I'm sorry, up on the overhead, the Western Riverside County Conservation Authority RCA has acquired the B Canyon property and approximately 670 acres of undeveloped habitat near the city of Corona for conservation of the Western Riverside County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan for $21 With various local and state funds, the property is a critical component of the irreplaceable wildlife corridor linking the Santa Ana Mountains, Cleveland National Forest, and Chino Hills State Park via an undercrossing below State Route 91. Caltrans is improving the adjacent undercrossing to make it more hospitable to mountain lion and other animals. B Canyon supports many special status species, but it is utmost importance, utmost importance for the long-term survival of the mountain lion population in the Santa Ana Mountains, which is threatened by habitat fragmentation, habitat loss, and vehicle collisions. RCA purchased the B Canyon property with $6.6 million of local development mitigation fees and $14.5 million awarded by the California Wildlife Conservation Board from the Habitat Conservation Fund and other resources. This is the, this is the parcel of land that also includes Star Canyon Ranch. And again, they will not give me a key to the gate. So this is now in the city of Corona, which I'm a council member. It's also part of RCA, which I'm a board member. I am over to on a key. Thank you Aaron Hake, who said no with a smile. Getting a little tired of being told no, I can't go up there. No, you can't stop me.
Come on Aaron, you can't get out a key.
No, you can't stop me. But this is, this is a real good pickup for RCA for conservation, 670 acres. We've been after this for a long, long time. Obviously, the mountain lion population and other animals, but it's preserving land that will never, ever, ever, ever be built, which is a good thing.
I will add, this is such an awesome piece of property because there was a development proposal that was put forward to the city probably 15 years ago for 900 homes. Very large project. It got, in fact, I think there are still some drawings that are online somewhere. So I was so happy to see this and so happy the city actually submitted a letter supporting Caltrans getting a grant for that undercrossing. So really great project. And to see that, that piece was always one of those pieces where I was worried that somebody was going to come along and grab it and either go one way or the other. And this is great news.
All right. Thanks Tony. Thanks Wes. Up next is, if you haven't had enough RCTC tonight, you're going to get more. Wes Speak is going to speak on, well, RCTC. What happened on February 26?
It'll be a fast one. We just had three items. The first one was getting some additional money to Riverside County Transportation Department for their construction, or continued construction of the group of road, group of road, oh my gosh, I cannot talk tonight. Road grade separation, not those two words together. An additional $35 million in Measure A money to ensure that that, that project gets completed. That was one of the projects that were promised as part of the gas tax and the, as, as we did, under guessed the amount and maybe the RCTC for contributing the rest of the money for that project. Second was some found problems for a project in Reno Valley for their MetroLink station platform expansion project. And this is out of the second line between the Para Station and the Reno Valley Station. It's a good project. And then last, but not least, is helping out the city of Beaumont with the Route 60 Petrero Boulevard interchange. And they contributed $5.7 million. That's it. Thanks.
That's record time Wes. Jim, RTA Board Meeting, February 22.
Yes, sir. So let's see, total ridership for January was up 8.2% compared to the same time last year. For the fiscal year, total ridership was up 12.6%. In honor of Equity Day, February 4th, RTA gave over 8,500 free rides on all local commuter length and go, commuter link and go micro buses. In addition, the front seat was reserved on every bus in honor of Rosa Parks' birthday. RTA honored the heroic actions of Coach Operator Deja Cage. Miss Cage witnessed a massive traffic accident in a nearby intersection as she waited for her customers to board. It was actually a pretty incredible video. A pickup truck had plowed into a tanker truck and both were set on fire as the drivers ran away. And Miss Cage has immediately evacuated her bus, notified dispatch, just kept, made sure everybody stayed safe. So good job Deja. After one year of service to the San Jacinto and Hemet area, the Go Micropilot Program has been a huge success. The program has transported more than 55,000 customers with an average rating of 4.7 out of five stars. RTA staff will continue to monitor ridership, travel patterns, and adjust as needed to further improve efficiencies and meet growing demand. And finally, the city of Riverside has recently approved a partnership with the shuttle company Omeo to move its international headquarters from New Zealand to Riverside. RTA was approached by the city and asked if the agency would be interested in providing the safety, safety operators for a two-year pilot program. Thanks to the board's approval, staff will begin conversations with the city of Riverside and Omeo for a potential operations and maintenance service partnership. We're excited to bring some more updates on this down the road. It's the future of, the more future of technology that we're going to be faced with. That's it Mayor.
Thanks Jim. Master Sergeant City Clerk, are there any speaker cards on this one?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
All right. Thank you Sylvia. City Attorney's Report and Comments, Dean? Okay. Jacoby?
No Mayor, thank you.
Tony? Wes?
Just super happy to see doing the Vista Dorada grand opening. It was nice to see Karen Roper and, and hearing from some of the residents there was pretty moving, pretty exciting to see that facility running on all cylinders. And was there attended with Vice Mayor Steiner, the homeless, what was the homeless, what did we call it? Symposium, the grand, yeah.
Homeless Symposium.
Yeah, homeless symposium. And I'll say, city of Corona should be proud of Vice Mayor Steiner to really cutting through and to the point with our, the other cities and, and Supervisor Spiegel's district. And it was very entertaining, so I appreciate that.
By that you mean he told them all to get their act together and do something?
He said some, some very poignant.
Very Jim words.
Very genuine. That were repeated often by other, other cities in tribute.
I'm a trendsetter.
Absolutely, absolutely.
When you do it, you're a trendsetter. When I do it? Exactly. It's all in the delivery.
Jackie, do you have anything?
No, nothing for me. Thank you.
Jim? Got a little education for y'all. Well, first off, I got to speak to the Kiwanis people. And if you ever get to speak to the Kiwanis Club, they're the greatest people. They love our city, they love our council, and they wanted me to convey to all of you those exact sentiments. And they're just, they're great people. And then last, I didn't, I didn't learn this until I became the mayor, but when you close a meeting in somebody's honor, the, the staff upstairs puts like a proclamation together. So Sylvia, I need you to, to work with me on this one. This proclamation that we're going to close with tonight that's put together, if you can work with Angela, if it can be signed by the entire Corona City Council and the entire Norco City Council, someone's going to have to take it over to them. And the reason is this. Mayor Kevin Bash of Norco and Vice Mayor Jim Steiner of Corona nominated Karen Roper for the Riverside County Woman of the Year. And unfortunately, whoever's in charge of the awards over there didn't pick her and they should have. And, but that's their problem, it's not ours. So with that, I would like to close tonight's meeting in honor of Karen Roper, who is the Real Riverside County Person of the Year. And if we can have both councils sign that proclamation when Angela puts it together, that would be great. Thank you.[1781.42][1781.42]